All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us at the Monterey City Council meeting today. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to staff to do roll call, please.
Yeah, Clementine, please.
Yes, sorry, I was in the wrong screen. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson, not here yet, but I understand we're expecting him soon.
That is correct. Thank you, Clementine.
Thanks.
And then next, we have a public comment, so I'll pass it back to staff to describe how that process works for us today.
Okay, super. Thank you, Vice Mayor Williamson. There are a couple of ways to participate in city council meetings. One is to join directly using Zoom Gov on the Zoom app on your computer or mobile phone. The other method is to call in to the meeting using additional telephone line or cellphone. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, please use the link or phone number that's on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864, and then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333, pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app by pressing the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine, and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. We do ask that you stay within the three-minute time limit established for today's meeting, and we'll also be showing a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. This meeting is also being streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay, and also on Comcast Channel 25 that has a 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment from you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and then who's going to welcome in the public comments for us?
Yep, I can do that, and we'll start with open public comment and for items not on today's agenda, and the first caller is Esther Malkin. And Esther, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. Most of you were on the council a couple of years ago when we had a significant uptick in crime on our side of the city, and I want to bring that to your attention again tonight because I don't know how much or how aware you are of what is actually happening over here, but we recently had a break-in while a family was home that the perpetrator was not caught. They escaped the home while they were in the home. We also had a traffic stop on our side of the city that a ghost gun was recovered, which is a very dangerous weapon. So I want to speak to you guys as the vice president of my neighborhood and ask you to think about ways that our city remembers that this side of the city is bordered up with Seaside, who has recently gotten significant media coverage that their uptick in crime includes multiple shootings that have not been solved. And we are always more precarious to the crime that happens in the city on this side than those of you that live deeper into the city, like downtown, as well as New Monterey. So I would like to bring to your attention that we need to not let this get to the level it did last time because Prop 47 passed. This time, there are, you know, there's no excuse for this regardless of whether it's COVID or not. You know, we have criminals that know that they are not going to get incarcerated easily anymore. And there's a policy of if somebody doesn't get injured, they don't get taken to jail, even if it's something like a break-in to a home, as well as there's no bail in place right now, so basically criminals don't have to post bail. And we have the maximum probation on the books right now is one year, so we have people getting out of jail and prison earlier. And yes, it's COVID-related, but on our streets, on our side of the city, we are and are going to continue feeling the uptick more than other parts of the city. So I would like you guys to keep that in mind and address it and find a way of making the public on the side of the city feel more comfortable and safe in their homes when they're at home, as well as when they're not. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Esther. We appreciate you calling in. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller, and the last three digits of their phone number is 722. Welcome. Oh, you're muted. If you could please unmute yourself by dialing star six. There we go.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Hi, my name is Meredith Noel, and I'm...
Nope, are you there, Meredith? Oh, we can hear you now. Can you please continue?
Yeah, and I'm a lighting specialist with Edge's Electric Group in Monterey. And the reason why I wanted to... The reason why I wanted to... I'm getting feedback. The reason why I wanted to speak with you today is for UV lighting. I'm a 40-year lighting expert and have been involved with the International UV Association, which is international, and UV... Hang on, let me, let me lower my, my computer. Okay. And UV technology has been around for over 30 years, and it's proven technology to kill pathogens. It's been brought forward again, not as called germicidal lighting. It's called UV lighting based upon the nanometers of the lighting illumination levels. There are two types of UV lighting, and simply said, one can be used with occupied space, proven safe technology. The second type, which is 254 nanometers, must be used only in unoccupied space. What this means exactly is with a 254 nanometer UV light fixture of a variety of types, a space can be 100% disinfected, sanitized from the COVID virus. UV lighting zaps, for one of another word, the DNA and RNA in COVID. I'm working with the top manufacturers, GE, Philips Signify, and of course, some others. But I would love for the county to really take a closer look at UV lighting technology. As you all know, companies and businesses are crying to open up. It's better than just doing airflow. This kills the virus. It doesn't lessen it. It kills it 100%. It's being used several places throughout the country. It is not, however, being used in Monterey County. And frankly, my heart breaks for these businesses that are hurting and trying to conduct business when in fact, technology is available. I would love to be able to offer you a highly technical Zoom meeting in plain language, if you would like. And I'll leave my, I'll stop at that. I see a zero on my screen. You can contact Edge of Monterey.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you calling in.
Hey, Nat, you...
Wow, that's a rookie move. I'm sorry. So, yep, no other hands are raised, and thanks for the feedback there. We're closed for public comment on items not on this afternoon's agenda.
Yeah, I just want to, Vice Mayor Williamson, I just want to briefly state that the information shared about UV lighting is not that straightforward, and it's not a destined fact for coronavirus. So that was misinformation to a certain degree, and I wanted just to state that by itself. This is not the solution to open up restaurants.
Beautiful. Thanks for the clarification, Hans. And then we'll just go on to the consent agenda. If there's anybody in the public or anybody on council want to pull anything on the agenda?
And we don't have any hands raised for items to be pulled today.
And I'm not aware of anyone pulling an item either.
Beautiful. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve of the consent.
See, Alan, kind of, oh, Dan beat you to it, okay? Motioned by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Albert. Go ahead and take it to a vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Councilmember, Vice Mayor Williamson?
Yes. Thanks, Clementine. Okay, so next, our public appearances. Item number nine, receive update on emergency rental assistance program and authorize staff to apply for the county of Monterey, the county of Monterey for rental assistance funding. City manager Hans Wuslar.
So first of all, this is a 2020-21 record in approving the consent agenda. So staff expresses our deepest appreciation to Vice Mayor Williamson for that. Number two, I... We are briefing you today about the emergency rental assistance program. It was a centerpiece, or it is still a centerpiece, of our COVID-19 response. We allocated around $830,000 of our housing program funds, as well as CDBG funds into that program. Unfortunately, we ran out of money, and we actually spent a little bit more than we had budgeted for that, but we had folks still in the queue, and we used some of our housing program funds to have just one more check run. However, the future of the program can be really addressed by additional funding that will come hopefully soon to us. And our housing analyst, Grant Leonard, will introduce the topic to you with some of the details. And hopefully, that explains also how we are really confident that we will continue that program in the next, in the next future, hopefully by the end of March, that we have funding again available. And with that, I hand it over to Grant.
Thank you, Hans, and thank you, council. I'm going to be sharing my screen, but at the moment, I'm getting a warning sign that the host is disabled screen sharing, so when that's ready, I'll be happy to begin.
It's not ready for you, Grant. Thank you.
Okay. The emergency rental assistance program, as Hans mentioned, we'll start with a little bit of background. Their original budget was $800,000. That was funded through a variety of community development block grant funds. The first was our first allocation of CARES Act funding, which we received in spring and summer of last year. The second portion was our additional CARES Act funding, which is called CV3, which we received in the fall. And the balance was funded through our community development block grant program income for the year. And our program income comes in from a variety of sources, including ground leases, sale of properties, and payoff of old loans that the city has for home payment assistance or home repair loans. So that funding source, it can go up, it can go down. So we're pretty sure we could get the $250,000 for that to give us the balance of $100,000. We launched the program in August, and we received, began issuing our first payments in September. And importantly, we wanted this to be a regional program. So folks who lived in city of Monterey qualified, but also people who lived outside of Monterey but worked within the city. And so to reach those folks, we partnered with the United Way of Monterey County and their 211 service, so that people could easily call 211 and be directed to our rental assistance program. As Hans mentioned, we had closed the program last week. We had received 300 applications, and we were able to assist 162 households. The balance of those applications were either duplicates or disqualified for not living or working within the city, or they just didn't complete the process, didn't provide all the required documentation. Before anyone was disqualified, staff followed up with both emails and phone calls to give them one more chance to complete the process. In total, we issued over about 400 checks and just under $1 million in assistance, $960,000. 70% of recipients lived within the city, and 30% were employees who lived elsewhere in the county. What did our check assistance look like? Well, this is a graph that shows the average check size. So a certain number of people really didn't need that much assistance, maybe a couple hundred dollars to complete their rent for a month or two. The vast majority received grants, checks between $1,000 and $2,500. And that pretty much tracks with our rent rates here in the city. And then fewer people needed larger checks. And those folks were the ones who received their full six months of assistance. They might have been already six months behind on rent by the time they applied to us. They had a very large check to request. This graph shows how many months of assistance the grantees received. So a lot of people did receive the full six months, but there is a pretty good mix between one, two, three, four, five months. It's likely that if we had additional funding, many of these people would have continued for their six months. Now, this graph shows the increasing need for the program since we launched. This is the monthly amount of assistance we provided. We thought we were providing a lot of assistance in September with our first payments, but that was quickly dwarfed in October. And then we saw a lull in November. That's partly as people started to go back to work before the second shelter in place. But following that second shelter in place, the last two months has really seen an explosive growth in the amount of applications and the amount of assistance we've provided, which brings us to why we were unable to continue the program. We had maxed out on our funding. We did receive a lot of appreciation from our grantees. Here are just three quotes that are representative. The first one is specific to our administrative assistant, Sarah, and her excellent work that she did, and her very good customer service that she has. And it's clear that Amber W. was very appreciative of that personal touch the city was able to offer. The second one also from Kayla explains what a benefit this was for four months, that they were able to receive assistance. And keep in mind, this is over the holiday period. A lot of people were worried about how to pay their bills. And the finer one is actually from Twitter. So this is public record out in the universe there, and she's just thanking the city for all the great work we're able to do and the assistance we provided them. In terms of next steps, the county of Monterey has received $26 million in federal assistance from the most recent federal stimulus act. They've decided to partner with the United Way of Monterey County to disperse that funding to eligible nonprofits and local cities. City of Monterey would need to apply for that funding to the United Way, and the application was just released at 5:00 PM last Friday, February 12, and it is due March 1st. So staff has not had enough time to really process that application, give much details on it. But that is the deadline, March 1st. And so we go back to our action for tonight, which is to seek direction from council on applying for this funding.
Thank you, Grant, for the presentation. Council?
I have a question, Tyler.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you for the report, staff. What would be considered our, if we, since we applied for the Monterey County assistance funding, what would be, what will we apply for? How much would they be able to give us? What would be the amount?
That's an excellent question. There's not a formula allocation in the application. So I think it would be more of us determining what the need is that we've seen from our existing program, and how long we want to continue this. The United Way funding is available to be spent through now and December 31st of this year. So we would have to project out what we anticipate the rental assistance need is between now and the end of the year.
So when you apply the application, we don't have to put a number, a specific number of what we're asking for?
I know. I think we would have to put a specific number. We would have to determine what that is before...
So it's not requiring it then? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me add two more clarifying pieces of information. So in our initial letter to United Way, we were asking for about $1 million. And that was based on the, at that time, overall funding of something over $12 million, $12.7 million, if I remember the number correctly. And that was the first indication when we heard that there's money coming, and we sat down at that time and did a really, really rough estimate considering factors such as reopening and economy, probably leisure travel bouncing back, hopefully, May-June. So we put in $1 million. So that number is in our initial letter to United Way. Given now that this number has been increased by additional funding sources to $26.7 million, and we have now a formalized application process ahead of us, we will take a good look also at the ramification and advancements of the economic future that we can see right now and apply then through the application process. But initially, we said between now and May-June, probably $1 million is probably what gets us through. But we will take a good look at now that we know we have more money, or more money has been allocated to the county of Monterey.
How about the qualifications for it? I know we were restricted with the CDBG funding. Do those same restrictions exist for if and when we get the funding from the county?
There are similar restrictions. It's not exactly the same because it is through the county, and this is also not community development funds, community development block grants. It's actually from the Department of Treasury. But some specific requirements that differ also relate to the state of California and their recent legislation that was passed, SB 91. And that includes that this rental assistance will only cover 80% of a tenant's back rent. That's because to stay in your apartment now, you only have to pay 25% to avoid eviction. So the assumption is this program would pay the balance whatsoever. Landlords would have to agree to that, and also up to 12 months of funding can be provided. And most of that is intended to be back rent, but the funding could also pay for up to three months of future rent. So folks who may just have been laid off or uncertain when they're going to be rehired, they could have three months of forward rental assistance.
Any other questions out there?
Yeah, just a comment and a question.
Uh, yeah, just a, a comment and a question. So Grant, in terms of the deadline, uh, I know it's a short window, March first. And the staff report indicates a possible, um, launch of March seventeenth with payments. Do you anticipate, well, I'm sure you'll be able to make the deadline in March first. But does this have to come back to the council for any further action to accept, uh, grant application? Or with this action tonight, it clears staff to be able to move ahead to make, make this tight dime timeline?
Uh, that is an excellent question. I think, I'm not sure if I'm the one who would answer that or the city attorney.
I think we will come back and, and get the award, uh, approved by you and accept the funding. But that doesn't prevent us from, uh, already starting to, to work on that program, especially with the know-how that we have, uh, uh, created over the past nine months, six, seven months or so. So yes, uh, you have to, we have to accept the money officially and, and, uh, through our finance department and the award.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of maybe a motion tonight that helps cut some corners and save any steps. But, uh, we, we can always meet rather quickly to do anything in a hurry. The other thing I wanted to note is it's a seventy percent residence payout, um, and thirty percent were non-residents. With the assumption that those are folks that are working in Monterey. Um, that's a fantastic, um, track record. Uh, it's fabulous that we were able to reach out and actually help some of our neighboring, um, well, our employees in Monterey, but actually neighbors of our community, uh, to be able to do a seventy thirty split. So this is just a little nuance and it's going to depend on the grant application. Uh, but it may be that our approach would be a little different. Because if we assume that the county money is being divided up by all of the cities, the other cities would now have more money to take care of their own residents. It may be that we're better off to approach this as now residents. Because those that are employees in Monterey are residents of Pacific Grove, Marina, Seaside, and the like. So I, I just, I don't know how to say it any other way, that I just don't want to see us short ourselves. Um, and, and other cities have the responsibility to manage their money as well. With the way they're going to allocate the money that they're awarded. So that, you know, the details will come out of the grant later. So I just wanted to make that note. But thank you very much, staff, for the thorough report and, um, supported along the way. And it's fantastic that that many people were able to help to make sure that, uh, they could get by. So now it's the last, the last step, a few more months.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I, I actually did just have one follow-up question. Um, utilities, how, how does that, uh, work into this? Are, are the payments that we're expecting to create for this, um, specifically for the rent? Or, or will it possibly include utilities as well?
Uh, excellent points. Uh, this funding does cover both utilities and rent.
Awesome. Thank you. And, and I, I just kind of wanted to follow up to, to Ed's point, if I may. I, I'm not sure what, uh, staff's plan is in regards to developing that number that we're going to be requesting. But it seems like a pretty large number for the, for the county. And I, and I imagine that we could probably tap into a good portion of that, especially because we have history of executing effectively a program. And, and utilizing all the funding that was in it. So I think it doesn't hurt for us to be able to continue supporting, um, those that are also employed within the city, because that helps out the, the business community as well. So it's just something to think about and, and it might be something that is, um, proposed to the council. So we can have a deeper look at what, which direction might be better to go in. Um, okay, with that, I, we will take it out to the public.
Okay, for, uh, those who have joined us, uh, please raise your hand using the Zoom function. We have no callers, so, uh, please raise your hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. And the first caller we'll be taking today on this topic will be Esther Malkin. So welcome back, Esther.
Hi again. Um, so yeah, kudos for getting the program up and running and functioning well. I think it's a good example of something that advocates have been asking for, for many years before COVID. And hopefully will continue well after, because the need is not going to go away. Um, even when people go back to work, because our, our economy in this city is mostly based on hospitality. Which typically is a very low wage paying industry. So, um, I wanted to bring up the point that I, that I keep making. That when we use these funds that have all these restrictions, it, it disqualifies a lot of people. And it's almost counterproductive to not include people that are above the HUD recommendations. The, until they fall into those recommendations. So if we want to prevent homelessness from the group of people that are not able to qualify for the program parameters, it's important for us to find a way to get assistance. And make it available to people who are not able to, um, qualify for these, um, HUD restricted funds. And I'll remind you that sixty six percent, which I'm guessing that's an updated number. Sixty six percent of residents in the city are renters. And only a hundred and sixty two people have been helped. Now, I'm not saying that all renters needed help. But when you think about sixty six percent being the number, that gives you an idea of how many renters could very well not have qualified. And that's why you had, you know, three hundred applications. And then there were people that didn't apply because they knew the qualifications and didn't apply. So I urge you to find another source to, to make some funds available to cover some other people that eventually, if they are not covered, are going to be the ones that fall into homelessness. Because they don't have any options. If you, if you already are practically impoverished, because that's what you have to be living on to qualify for the HUD parameters. You have an access to some sort of help. But if you can't, then you're the first ones, those are the first ones that are going to end up being homeless on our streets. So I just wanted to point that out. And I, I think that shooting for a million dollars isn't enough. I think you should shoot high and let them negotiate you down. And after forty years of being in this, in sales, I will tell you that it is always better to shoot high. Thanks.
Thanks, Esther. Looks like we have no other callers. So we'll give this, uh, back to you.
Okay, so, uh, thanks, Matt. I, I just wanted to, uh, quickly respond to Esther, uh, in that, um, we, we're restricted with the fund hunting, uh, the HUD funding. Um, and so, you know, I think ideally it would be great to have a program that would help people from having to get into the categories of, of requiring, um, the assistance as it's probably specified. Uh, and I think that's something for us as, as a city to think about as we move forward with trying to develop something for more of the long term. Um, but just wanted to respond quickly. I see that the mayor is, is present here, so I'm going to pass the gavel to our lovely mayor.
Oh, you're doing so well. Don't you want to wrap, wrap it? Stay with it, Tyler. Wrap up this one. It's back to you.
All right, Mayor, I appreciate it. Uh, I saw Alan's.
You're doing great.
Appreciate it. I saw Alan's hand go up there.
Yeah, um, I have some thoughts, but I think I'd like to just get on the table a motion first. So I'm going to move approval of the staff proposal.
A second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, um, I had a couple of thoughts. Um, first of all, I just want to, again, extend appreciation to our staff for successfully implementing our own program this past year. I know that when COVID first hit and we all immediately saw how this would impact people's ability to pay rent and how that could, uh, have a ripple effect that would negatively impact so many families, uh, who live and work in the city. That this was an, a high priority for our council. And, um, and that implementing it effectively is something that was very, very important to council. And, um, from all of the metrics and indicators, I believe that it was a success. We helped, um, uh, uh, over a hundred and fifty families. And, um, and, and we gave out almost a million dollars. And I also wanted to comment on Ed's point. I think it is, I think it's a worthwhile conversation to make sure that we have the maximum benefit for folks in terms of how much of it goes to people who live in the city versus people who work in the city but may not live here. Um, but as I thought about it, I kind of think there might be a benefit in our application remaining consistent with what we've already done. And obviously, I think this is going to be a staff level determination, but here are just my thoughts for staff to think about on that. First of all, we have data. As we apply for more money, I think we can use the data we already have. So if you look at, you know, the months of January and February, where I think we were giving out about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. I think you could use that as a baseline for the whole year and reasonably request something like about two and a half million, which would put you at about ten percent of the total county allocation. Uh, but if you change the mix of who we're helping, I think then it becomes more problematic uh, and, and more difficult to justify. Plus, I think it would be beneficial for those thirty percent that we've already been help, helping to be able to continue to help them, um, so that they don't have to try to shift to a whole new intake, application, allocation process with some other entity. And then I think some cities may not, may not actually be able to participate. You know, not all cities will have the staff or the capacity to implement something like this. So, um, I, and then finally, I think this may put our application in a better position in terms of the, uh, ranking when the county looks at applications. I don't know that. I'm just speculating, but it strikes me that, um, that there could be, um, benefit for us in terms of getting grant money by continuing what we're doing. And of course, just a reminder, as Tyler said, part of the reason, and I wasn't sure we should do this at first. Um, I think Hans was a strong proponent of this. I think Tyler, Esther were, and there were other, and folks on staff that we should be expansive. Um, but in the end, right, it helps our business, uh, our business environment by making sure that the people who work here are able to stay in the area and continue to work here when work resumes. So anyway, I, I think it's a win-win. Um, and, and again, I, the second point I, I kind of mentioned in, in passing. But I would say we should look at, at, at sort of the last few months as a baseline, project that forward. And I think that's where you should get the number that, that we should be asking for. All right, thanks, everybody, and, uh, and good, good work.
Okay, any other comments? Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I just, I want to follow up, but thanks, uh, Hans, or, um, Alan, I think there's, they're all good thoughts. I guess it's, we're projecting out our, our thoughts, which is what we're supposed to do as we move forward. But we don't know what the criteria of the grant will look like yet and how they're going to allow us to, um, to develop and come up with the numbers. But I just in, um, in processing some of the information, I think that the county's intent is that the agency of two one one would be the one agency that all cities would be able to work through. So I think the resources will be there. Hopefully, this won't be very difficult for an applicant. Uh, and the applicant won't be intimidated. And I'm sure that all of the cities, and especially our city that's already done this, will be able to refer people to the right way, the right place, uh, and, and actually, actually act as a resource as well. Um, whether the money is coming from two on one or the money is coming from the city of Monterey, I think we're in a great opportunity to be able to receive, uh, questions and information from our residents and non-residents and, and get them to the place that they can get some resources to get them through until they're back to working. Um, but I think it's, we've got a great model and I think others are going to be looking at our model. Um, and I think the power of this network between all of the cities and two one one in the county and the city of Monterey's track record of being able to do this, this last, um, well, since September, I guess, uh, i- is a great opportunity. I do want to comment, Grant, you had three people listed with comments. Um, the public that's watching tonight should not minimize the fact that he only showed three. He probably could have showed a page of all the other comments. It would have led us up to the last thirty minutes. So people, employees, uh, employers, um, folks that recognize the benefit of this. And I heard from a lot of folks that said, hey, I would have lost my employees had they not been able to get this assistance. And when we reopen, they wouldn't be here to take the job back. They would have had to move out of town. So heard that a lot, a lot of communications from folks that, uh, benefited from it as employers and as those that were up against the deadline of, um, working with their, their landlords throughout the community. So great program. Thanks to staff that's worked so hard to make sure that every last dime that could be spent was spent. And look forward to seeing if we can qualify in a greater, greater means through the new money. Um, and we can do this all over again. But thanks, staff, for your hard work.
You know, I just want to do as a, as a final point, I think it's great that this, the council and, and the city are moving in a direction of trying to develop some kind of long-term sustainable program. Uh, but I think it's important to note that this is a kind of more of a Band-Aid to, to a larger problem. So definitely needs to be part of an overall strategy that also is looking at how do we help mitigate some of these long-term issues? And they're not easy. Uh, but at the end of the day, I, I, I'm of the belief that it, it can and should be done. Um, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Um, but I'm just wondering, Mayor, did you arrive before we started the discussion?
I, I, I got this staff. Are you, you're going to ask me to abstain? Is that what you're going to do?
I just want to make sure that. I went all the way to giving you the gavel back to telling you you can't vote.
No, I, I got, I got the report and everything. I'm good.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
No, you're right, though. You are exactly right. Thank you for asking.
Yes, sir. Dan, I see your hand up there.
Yeah, Tyler, before you, before we go to a vote, I just wanted to make one, uh, comment on what Alan mentioned about other cities not having the resources or the, um, the personnel to, to, um, apply, uh, large sums of money. I, I know that's true. A lot of cities probably don't apply for grants because they don't have the, the personnel to actually allocate the funds. And so for me, um, I would like to see what cities on the peninsula actually apply and what the amount of monies they get before I would look at the seventy thirty. Uh, that, that's just my own opinion. I'd like to see what, what's, what other cities are doing. So, and congratulations again, as Alan and Ed's, uh, said already to our staff. I think that once again, we are, um, you know, the, the front runners, the, the leaders of the, of the peninsula. And we really showed it in this program. Thanks, Tyler.
Absolutely. Uh, 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 last ditch, uh, kudos to, to staff on, on that work. Um, okay, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Uh, yes, for me as well.
And now I graciously hand it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And, um, did we have an opportunity, uh, we're going to go to closed session. Did we have an opportunity to ask the public if there were any comments about closed session? So I think that would be the appropriate thing to do right now. So Nat, uh, do we have any folks who want to comment about our closed session items?
We, we sure do. Uh-huh, we, we do, and that is, uh, Esther Malkin. So we'll allow her to speak and welcome back.
I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing from me, but I guess nobody else is watching or listening. But, I mean, how long is this going to stay in RFP, i- in a closed session? And I really question the need for it to be i- in closed session to begin with. And certainly this long, without the public having any idea of what's going on. Given the fact that the only reason this conversation even was started was because the public, meaning the renters advocates, had asked for these specific properties to be looked at. And to keep it under closed session for this long, I just, the explanation of. I just, the explanation of uh that has been given is not sufficient. And you know, at this point, just for transparency's sake, it's time for it to come out of closed session. Or at least give us more of an update, then we're still working on it. I mean, no disrespect, but come on, guys. Thanks.
Thanks, Esther. We have no other public comment on the closed session agenda.
All right. So unless I'm mistaken, we're going to go uh during to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify that those items are the first time now in closed session with you.
Actually, it's the first time we, I have seen the proposals, the RFPs, very first time. So that's a good point. Yeah, but and obviously, we want to have public comment, and we will certainly have that opportunity. All right, well, s- the race is on. Who's going to get to the closed session Zoom first? Thank you. Vice Mayor, you did an outstanding job.
We welcome everyone to our evening session of our City Council meeting. We appreciate you giving us your time this evening and look forward to public comment. Before we get too much further, let's turn it over to our talented Assistant City Manager Nat Roganasafer to explain to people how they can participate according to the Governor's Executive Order in our meeting.
Great, thank you Mayor Roberson. There are two ways for members of the public to participate in City Council meetings. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on their computer or mobile device. And the second method is to join by calling directly into the meeting. To join in the meeting using the Zoom app or on the smartphone, please use the link or the phone number on the agenda. And that is available at isearchmontreal.org. Since the meeting has already started, you'll find that number and the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333, and if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound again. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app by pressing the Raise Hand button located at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine, and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the three-minute time limit established for today's meeting, which will be showing using a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube with a 10-second delay, as well as on Comcast Channel 25, which has a 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment. Back to Mayor Roberson.
Thank you so much. And so I understand that our esteemed City Clerk Clementine Bonner-Klein is going to show the flag for us, if that's true? And then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance as soon as we see it. All right, good old Colton Hall, we're so happy for that. All right, would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance plea? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clementine, would you introduce our caring City Council, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Here as well. Public comments, anything that's not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, we welcome your comments. If you have a comment about an agenda item, please wait until that item comes up, and we certainly give you an opportunity to speak at that time. As always, if you want to leave a contact either now or later, our excellent staff will get back to you to help you answer your questions. So Nat, do we have any general open-mic continued public comments karaoke?
Yes, we have one person for our open-mic period, and this is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 705. Yes, we have one person for our open mic period, and this is a telephone caller with the last three digits seven zero five. And we just asked that they unmute themselves. At this time, and we will hear from them. Again, just a reminder for our caller, please be sure to dial star six to unmute yourself. That way we will be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Roberson and city council members. I'm Lorna Moffett. And I've been trying to avoid plastics in everything I buy. And in doing so, I've become aware how much plastic is being forced upon us. We need to do better and urgently. A report in Science News tells a grim story that microplastics are significantly, quote, contaminating our air and water. From the Alps to the Arctic. Dr. Bergman found 12,000 microplastic particles per liter in Arctic sea ice. Dr. Bergman Bergman is the from the Institute of Polar and Marine Research in Germany. There's no real data yet on the health effects of these plastics we are breathing and drinking in, but it cannot be good. I noticed many restaurants are only using plastic wares when they should be using real plates like they do at Fisherman's Wharf. I know the council has taken steps to try and encourage biodegradable plastics or recycled plastics. But biodegradable can take years to biodegrade and they're still made with harmful substances. And the recycle industries are overloaded and not enough is being recycled. These micro particles are in our bodies. Nanoparticles pass through the blood brain barrier of our brains. We are not dealing with this problem fast enough. How can our immune system fight COVID when our bodies are being blighted with so much micro pollution? We need a city ordinance that mandates all restaurants can no longer use plastics, period. They have to go to paper. Paper is now being made out of sugarcane and other such substances. We can also allow people to be able to bring their own containers. The health department says that this this poses a risk to our health. If restaurants are forced into action, they can set up systems where customers hold their own containers while the servers place the food in the containers and no one touches anything. I went to a restaurant on Alvarado Street thinking their black bowls were real stoneware. Upon receiving my order, I realized it was a huge black plastic bowl. Many of these are being served a day and they aren't even recyclable. These bowls will last more than years in my lifetime. Please, we are forcing, we are facing an emergency, a COVID plastic revolution, when we should be getting away from plastics. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. And we have no other raised hands for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, thank you. Announcements from closed session, please.
The council did begin a conversation on the closed session item number one, but it is going to be continued later this evening, is my understanding. Please, Chrissy, correct me if I got that wrong.
That's correct. And the closed session items were continued to the evening and there's no reportable action at this time. Thanks.
Okay, good. We'll go to our first public appearance item, which is changing. The budget for the fiscal year, and we're going to get a very nice report here momentarily. All of us, I know. Are watching the news and see the chaos out there about the COVID-19 and who's eligible for vaccinations, who isn't it? Should we open schools? Should we not open schools? Eighty-nine percent of the schools they're talking about opening are in the red hotspots. And then we've got the economy, which is struggling, as we well know. And since we're in many ways a tourist based economy, the city of Monterey has taken significant hits in its budget. And just read something that was sent to me by the Canary Rope Company with respect to recovery in the hotel motel industry, looking at 2024. For total recovery and even pushing past 2021 this year before we're looking at the beginnings of economic recovery. Fortunately, there's an administration, a national administration that understands this. They're working on a $1.9 trillion CARES Act. And part of that would be money directly to local governments, which wasn't in any relief packages up till now. So I want to say that this our city staff has done a really incredible job of trying to balance the budget. All of us still are have our hearts broken when we have to lay off people and eliminate positions in the city. And we'll hear a little bit more about reopening and what that might look like in the future. So with that, we'll go to our exemplary city manager Hans Oslar to make the introductions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and council members. This fiscal year started in July 1st, 2020. And we have updated you every three months or so about the budget. This is necessary to keep all of us informed how we are doing. And the first two sessions that we had were in September and also in December. Both times we updated you about our projected and real estimates that we had. You had a you have a good idea of how we were standing in December with our TOT and also with sales tax. The stay at home order in December, we mentioned it in our briefing verbally because it just was issued by the governor. And it definitely had an immediate effect that we could see in our own revenues. But more importantly, also that our hospitality partners and. In the hotel industry and the restaurant industry could see directly in their respective businesses. With that, also our sales tax and our hotel tax continued quickly down in a downward trend again. So tonight, we have the third update of this fiscal year for you, and we'll ask you also to make. To follow our recommendation and do some budget appropriations in order to help us balance the budget. With that, I punted over to our finance director Lauren Lai.
Thanks so much. The mayor and city manager have done a great job introducing the subject, so I'm going to try to share my screen. Share screen. Great. So as the mayor and city manager mentioned, this is a budget update for the fiscal year. Usually we do this halfway into the year. We call this a mid-year update. In this instance, we're going to keep it brief because there's a lot of information in the reports themselves. And tonight we do want council to adopt the resolution which will authorize budget amendments. This report is focused on the general fund, which is the primary fund for the city. We want to talk a little bit about COVID, the impact, really jump into the bottom line and what it means, keep the report at a high level. And then talk about the budget appropriations. And we've mentioned before and will mention again how measure G and Y were tremendously timely. And they're tremendously critical right now as we look at preserving our core services. So I'll go back and forth on the bottom line, and then I will then expand on how we got there. So COVID-19, certainly not to dwell on it, certainly has affected our city's finances, which means our revenue has taken a big dive. We've made course corrections along the way, and every few months we're going to the council and the public to update you on where we are. Because our economy is driven by tourism, the shelter in place orders restricted and then rolled back, restricted and rolled back. Has a direct impact. And I believe the monitoring and reporting to the council makes it a better approach. So we can make incremental adjustments along the way. With that said, this pandemic continues to be unpredictable by way of its health crisis, by way of the government orders. And also a big feeling of hope is that we have vaccines being rolled out. It does make it difficult to measure forecasts for the reasons we talked about. So we will continue to monitor, work with our partners and topic experts. And continue to communicate to the public and to the council in terms of how we will respond and continue to provide services. Because we know that providing government services is important to people's lives and will be. Bottom line, let's start here. So first of all, do I need to minimize the views here? Nat, I see pictures of us in the panel. Do you want me to minimize that?
Everything looks good. Yep, everything looks good on our end, Lauren. We can see the presentation clearly.
Great. I needed to minimize it on my end. Thank you for that. So jumping into the bottom line, and then I'll expand on it. Where we are today, tonight's report is what I'm labeling as the February 2021 update. The general impact here is in addition to the 18 million that we corrected in June, council is being presented with another $2.9 million of revenue loss. This was briefed to the council and public in December, so at this point, we're solidifying it. How we are recommending that we address it is that we're going to take our unassigned general fund balance, which is also sometimes called available general fund. And appropriating from our savings. And I'll clarify that in the next slide. In December, we also talked about the pandemic triggered layoffs that then prompted unemployment insurance costs to the city. We have since December researched and found that we can appropriate from our employee benefit fund seven eight hundred eighteen. So that $800,000 of additional costs will come out of that fund. So that's tonight's report. That'll be in the resolution that council has asked to approve. What we also have in this staff report is that we have information about sales tax that the pandemic is hurting our local sales tax even more than we anticipated. We'll continue to monitor that and bring information back in May and see where that stands. Certainly this past weekend and the governor's rollback of some of the restrictions has improved our local economy. With that said, we plan to come back in May. If the deficit is 2 million or whatever amount it is. Our proposal in addressing it is as follows, again, using our general fund balances, and we will recommend in this order. Take 90,000 from a set aside for the Monterey Bay Power JPA. This funding is no longer necessary. The JPA is well underway and successful. So the council can relieve that for this pandemic purpose. In addition, there's a designation in the general fund balance of 250,000 called operating contingency. Staff is recommending that council appropriate that in May if needed. And last but not least, after this appropriation tonight, we estimate that the general fund would still have about 2.3 million dollars available in savings. That should hopefully address any negative update we have in May if what we have today manifests. Then the question is, what about our economic uncertainty reserve? Our recommendation would be to use that after exhausting the general fund available balance. Now I've been asked to expand on the unassigned general fund and the economic uncertainty reserve because it seems confusing. And I want to take a moment to educate the public and the council so we are very transparent as to what this means. The unassigned general fund balance is an accounting term. Our savings in the general fund has various designations. The unassigned really means that this balance in the general fund is available. It's available for council to appropriate. It's a good thing. It's good news. I also want to qualify that by saying that. Where this money comes from is that it comes from accumulated prior year savings. What that means is that it's one time money. So once we use it, it's not there for us to use every year. We have enough there to appropriate tonight's recommendation, which is 2.9 million dollars. We're hopeful and we estimate that there will still be 2.3 million dollars remaining in the general fund. So that's the unassigned or available general fund balance. Then we have what we call the economic uncertainty reserve. This is actually a reserve that council has set aside by way of a policy and a resolution. It is at 16.6%, that equates to about two months of operating reserve. In 2020, we achieved our policy at 16.6%, which got us to 13.7 million dollars. Because of the pandemic, we had to appropriate some of it, and that's 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 the proper use because we are in a pandemic. So the current balance is 12.2 million dollars in the economic uncertainty reserve. So these are two different savings. I wanted to take a moment to explain that and put it in the slides. Now let's talk about what's in this report at a high level. In the agenda report, you'll see that we have about three tables. I'll state at this level. So what we see before is that the general fund in fiscal 21, we estimate that the COVID impact is a loss of 21 million dollars or 26%. Revenue, we estimate based on this amendment will be 67.6 million. Our expenditure is 72.5. You could see there in line three that we have an operating problem here where our expenditure still exceeds revenue. In this fiscal year, we solve the problem with operational reductions plus transfers, in this case from NCIP. And you'll see that in line four, we have a transfer in. So when you go down to line nine, we still have a deficit of 2.9 million, which is the core of this report. We're recommending that that 2.9 million be appropriated from our savings. I'll take you to the next slide. This is table two in the staff report. What this shows is basically the general funds balances. Non-spendable, as far as I'm concerned, that's all I need to say. These are non-spendable because they relate to advances. I'll call your attention to line four through eight. These are other designations in our general fund. We talked about line four, which is our economic uncertainty reserve is 12.2 million. We have over the years accumulated some money for other designations. We have capital projects that are ongoing and we have encumbrances, which are purchase orders that we have issued for contracts that we have authorized. I highlight line eight because that's the really important. I always keep a tab on this savings. This is the unassigned and available fund balance. Once we appropriate the 2.9 million dollars that I showed you in the last slide, we estimate that we will still have 2.3 remaining. So that's really important. This is the amount we estimate remaining after the 2.9 million dollars is deducted from this balance. All right. Moving on, let's take a moment to talk at a high level as to what's happening with revenue and expenditures in this snapshot report. On the revenue side, we have some improvements, in particular measure Y has brought in new revenue. Thank you to our hospitality partners. Thank you to our citizens. This is very timely important. We also received CARES Act money, about $350,000. We have a project, a very important landmark project in our that is bringing in revenues through our planning and permit desk. And we also have general fund cost recovery from other funds to continue to ensure that the general fund is reimbursed for administrative support. On the negative side of revenue, we have losses. Our losses on the on the revenue side is primarily due to the fact that the pandemic is going longer and deeper than we originally anticipated. Our facilities remain closed, so they impact TOT, sales tax, business license. And areas where we have fee revenues such as conference center, our sports center and our recreation programs. Let's switch over to the expenditure side. In government, we call it appropriation. We call it expenditure. They're in essence the same thing. We have expenditure increases because of our strike team overtime and our fire department. That is reimbursed by the state, so that's great news. We have a reimbursement from the state for that. We have the unemployment insurance, which I talked about, and that we'll be able to appropriate that from our employee benefit fund seven eighteen. In our legal defense, we have a small appropriation that we're asking to ensure that we succeed in these endeavors. We have utilities and then also in response to pandemic, we need some public works, maintenance and services to address. We have utilities, and then also in response to pandemic, we need some public works, maintenance, and services to address public hazards and waste in our various places in the city. Similar to the December report, what we like to give council is a snapshot as to where we are in December year over year. We have good news and we have bad news. The bad news is what we talked about already. Revenue was trending lower than we were last year. So how we read this report? I'll call your attention to how to read it. Row one is revenue, and what we look at when we look at this report is the percentage. So when we look at December twenty nineteen, we were trending forty eight percent of the budget. In December twenty twenty, we're only trending forty two percent of the revenue budget. So that means that we're actually six percent lower in our revenue this year, same time last year. And that equates to a four million dollar unfavorable trend. And keep in mind, that's only six months into the year, but that also reflects kind of what we're representing in this report to you as well. Good news. I like to be able to share some good news. Good news here. On the expenditure line, if you take the same analysis, December of twenty nineteen, we were trending forty eight percent. December twenty twenty, our expenditure is trending forty six percent of our budget. That two percent difference right now is equating to about one point two million dollars of savings on the expenditure side. I'll just qualify that by saying that some of our expenses are cyclical but not linear, so we might have some expenses later in the year. Should we continue to manage our expenses like this? We're hopeful that our expenses might come in under, and that will be another tool in our toolbox to address our severe losses on the revenue side. So we'll continue to give council a snapshot like this because I think this is a great read of the financial condition of the city. Again, in attachment to the report, we have a lot more detail by line item if you're interested, and I'm certainly, I'm available to answer any questions at the end of this presentation in that regards as well. Let's take a step back and talk about long-term financial challenges because sometimes we can also get kind of myopic. Council, public, we need to keep our eye on, you know, the fact that we need to be financially structurally sound. So we need to get back to a financial budget that is balanced, not using transfers or one-time monies, right? We need to keep an eye on putting together funding for repairing our facilities, addressing our pension liability, investing in technology, and a lot of other initiatives in the city that are important and a priority as well. In addition to the second slide where we talked about how are we going to address this tonight and in May, I also wanted to leave us with this slide that we had in the December report, which is, what is some of the strategies and parachutes that we have aside from the general fund savings? One, continually looking at our fiscal management of our expenditure, prioritizing those, prioritizing our projects and initiatives and our programs, that will be very fundamentally important. Two, our reopening and hiring fund was a very good wisdom of the council. We, we still have about one point five million dollars in that. We'll talk in the next slide about a measured reopening and, and some of the things we need to balance. Three, the available fund balance, which we spoke about in the last ten minutes. Four, the economic uncertainty reserve. And certainly, we continue to invest in our local economy to help our businesses thrive and pull through this pandemic. But as a city, we also need to look at new revenue opportunities, look at reinventing or creating a bridge offering for our conference center, be more assertive on revenue education and outreach, look at our online travel companies and get those revenues coming into us, and looking at ways we can streamline our process to make it more efficient and effective. Measured reopening. What does Lauren mean when we talk about measured reopening? You know, in June, we, we had to make some very difficult discussions, just decisions about closing our facilities due to health reasons and keeping everybody safe, and we've been very creative in providing some of these services in a virtual platform. And we've been slowly reopening them with health measures and social distancing. And we continue to look at ways to reopen these services. We understand that we need to reopen these to pre-pandemic levels. We do want to balance the community's expectation with what that financially means. When we reopen these business, these services, they come with rehiring full-time and part-time employees. Our finances right now are not in a position to do that. Also, when we reopen these services, some of which have fee revenues, the state may continue to limit our facilities. So in addition to the cost of opening these programs, we may not have the occupancy that drives the revenue to support the programs. I want to be transparent with the public as to how government finance works and how frustrating it can be. But we need to balance all these together as we work on looking at what services we really care about that we want to reopen. What will they cost? And can we sustain them? Three months, six months, twelve years, twelve months, a year out, two years out? That's kind of how we need to look at it, right? So we have the one point five million dollars for reopening. We can initiate some of it, but it's the ongoing cost of the program that we need to be looking at going forward. So we'll continue to monitor this. We've worked very well with the council and the public in looking at creative ways to partially reopen programs, and we'll continue to do that. NCIP, our beloved program over the years has generated a lot of successful projects. The planning for NCIP projects will resume. The planning cycle will start in spring of this year. What we'd like to do is estimate that the NCIP project budget will be two point five million. That two point five million dollars is based on what we estimate our T O T allocation is for NCIP in this new upcoming cycle. So that is a pandemic number because similarly, T O T doesn't have a big recovery yet. So NCIP is a derivative of T O T, right? We take sixteen percent of our T O T. So the two point five million dollars is the number that we estimate that the planning committee should work with to brainstorm and recommend projects to the city council. With that said, the pandemic is still going strong, unfortunately. And, and what that means is that we're not certain of our ability to sustain our general fund without NCIP contribution. Should the pandemic continue the way it is, and if we have continued restrictions on mobility and restrictions on shelter in place, our revenue will continue to suffer, in which case staff has a duty to come back to council to look at maybe NCIP as another contribution to the general fund, as one of our strategies and parachutes. Certainly, we value this program, but we want to be transparent as to what we know at this time and what the general fund's financial position could be a couple months down the road. Major takeaways from this report. The pandemic and shelter in place is longer, and that's why we are here today still having this conversation. The negative impact today is that we have two million loss on top of the thirty two million. State shelter in place and the rollback and the vaccines continue, so we have improvements, and we have setbacks, but we're hopeful that it will continue to improve, especially with the rollback of the restrictions. We're seeing our restaurants and our businesses come back. Vaccines are increasing in terms of administration, and we will continue to monitor and report this to the council and stay the course. With that, I ask that council please consider adopting the resolution, which will authorize us to make the budget amendments. Thank you so much.
Oh, Lauren, thank you for your exceptional report as always, and I, and I love your conclusion. Please pass the resolution. That says it all. That was good. Questions before we go to the public? Any questions about the presentation? Council member Dan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks again, Lauren, for a very understandable report. Again, it's, it's very important for our, our, our residents to understand exactly how city finance works, and it's very difficult. So I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but stop me if I do, and I probably, you probably won't even have the answer for this, but at least it's a concept that I, I wanted to ask. Every year, it seems like the department expenditures, they don't seem to spend all of their budget, and it falls out at the end of the year. And so mid-year, I'm wondering if staff has looked at their budgets to see if they're running the way they should at fifty percent at the middle of the year? And do you project that there will be any money falling out so that would help the two point three million or whatever we're going to be in the? That's question number one. And question number two is, if we do get to a point where in the next three months, we're, we're losing more money or not, not receiving the revenue we want, do, do we ever, has a city ever gone to those departments, put a freeze on the expenditures, and only use the, the dollars that we have allocated to them for essentially to keep the departments open? Those were just the two questions, and I'm not sure if you, you would have those questions or those answers, but it was just a, but you might. Why don't we give it a shot?
Yes, so let me, let me paraphrase back what I heard. One was budget estimates. We usually come in below our estimates, so how do we address that and what do we do at mid-year? Two is, what actions are we taking to ensure that we are really spending just critical dollars, right? That's kind of the essence of both questions. So let's, let's talk about, let's talk about question one. Budgets are a set of estimates, and, and so if we come within five percent, I feel like that's a good estimate, right? Ninety-five percent is an A in college. And, and so given that government finance is a complex science and art, I always kind of endeavor for us to come within five percent, right? And certainly tighter as we look at situations like this. So on that slide where I show the December snapshot where we're trending two percent, that's a very close margin. At this junction, I would say we don't want to take away that two percent yet. And so what we should do is let that ride out and see how it feeds your fund balance and then use that next tier. Let's switch over to question two. What are we doing to ensure that during the pandemic or during any year to be financial stewards, we are ensuring fiscal discipline and stewards of revenues? As a budget process, the city manager puts together guiding principles about policies and procedures. Council guides us with policies about what are our priority projects? What are we going to fund? And within that framework, department heads work with the city manager to look at managing the budget. Some tools we have is to ensure hiring freezes, hiring freezes, soft freezes, hard freezes have been ongoing for the last probably about three years, right? So that's a tool we have. In addition, we, we look at our appropriation and our purchases and evaluate if they're critical and timely. Certainly, the city manager has made that point before, before measure G, before measure Y, and certainly during this period as well. Last week, we had what we call a budget kickoff meeting. This is when we have a kumbaya as to how we plan the next budget cycle. The city manager's direction to everybody, and there were forty-eight of us on the call, was that, you know, our base right now is going to be where we are, the pandemic. Any additional program expansion, we need to look at new dollars. Any appropriation request needs to come with new dollars, and please, let's not put ourselves in a situation where we have to say no. Everybody's expected to ensure that we are thinking in a way where we're looking critically at our spending. Is it a priority? Is it urgent? Is it important and timely? So that's a long way of saying that we have tools in place before the pandemic, and certainly we have tightened and looked more critically at those tools. Again, at this point in this December report, I wouldn't recommend taking that two percent out. What I have shared with the city manager and the team is that in our next budget cycle, if revenues continue to trend this way, we need to look at the revenue side and the expenditure side to take out possibly this one or two percent if it's going to help us balance the budget. Again, budget is a set of estimates. City finance is very complex. Coming within ninety-eight percent is a success.
Thank you very much, Lauren. That's exactly the answer I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, very well. Other questions from the council on the report? Council member Ed, please.
Yeah, I want to jump in here because it's kind of tailing into what Dan had just talked about. Lauren, thank you very much. Very good answer. So if we went back even prior to you coming to the city, two, three, four, or five years, if we tracked at the end of the fiscal year and we had a surplus, and the council then decided that surplus would go to the reserve, that surplus would be what would be considered at the end of the year unused general fund money, and then it comes back to the council for a decision about what to do with the, the funds. Is that correct?
So, yes, yes. Let me, let me maybe make sure I understand what I heard. Legally, what the council and the, the public should understand is council is a legislative body that authorizes all spending. And in essence, that's what the budget is. The legal document that says the general fund is going to spend eighty million dollars, or in this case, seventy million dollars. And, and council i- in that spending document can spend from revenues, which is the revenue number, or may spend from savings. So yes, everything comes before the council to appropriate and authorize.
Yeah, so, so I guess at the end, at the end of each year, I, as I recall being on the council for over five years, the city manager reported before we talked about the available savings at the end of the budget year. And then there was some cleanup, and then there's a decision to make about, does it go to the reserve or is there a capital purchase? Or, you know, is there something else to do with that? So if pre-COVID years, we would look back three, four, or five years, we would see a trend about how to make an assessment to align expenditures and, and revenue. But we're not, but we're not there yet.
And we would bring you this, what we call the general fund ending balance. When all the accounts of the previous year budget year have been closed, have been audited. And so we will bring to you the ending balance about January, February following the closure of the previous budget year in June.
Yeah, yeah, great. That, and that's the way I remember it and understand it, but thank you very much.
All right. Other questions from Alan or Tyler, please? Or council member Tyler?
Yeah, I just had two, I had three questions, but I'll ask two of them at the same time. So the, the first part of this here is about the, about the revenue side for the, for the taxes. So one element is G and Y. How well are, are we doing in regards to those if we're able to take a snapshot versus how, how we would have done if we, if we didn't have those? And then the, the other element is property taxes. So I know we talked about property taxes when we were discussing the budget last year, and we didn't have an idea at that point, so I just kind of wanted to get an update as far as what are we seeing in regards to those revenues coming in?
So let's break it down to, those are more than two questions in there. That's a trick question. I think there is five in there. So, all right, I'll do my best. Measure G and Y. Measure G and Y. One was a half cent sales tax. We estimated four million dollars. During pandemic period, we estimated four million dollars. That's going to probably come in at about three and a half based on what we know. Again, we want to continue to monitor sales tax because sales tax is tied to restaurants and businesses. So that'll probably be between three million, three and a half million and four million. T O T is the two percent increase in T O T, which was approved, and we get half a year's worth of that. The pen number we were looking at is two point eight million for the year, but we only get half of that, which is one point four million. We'll can need to continue to monitor that just because we're not sure how that will yield based on the restrictions. It might come in at about a million two to a million four. Both of these will rally back as our shelter in place is eased. Both of these will rally back as our shelter in place is eased because they're both tied to tourism. Other parts of your question, property tax. Property tax is pretty stable. Property tax usually grows at CPI or two percent. It's capped at two percent because of Prop thirteen. CPI is actually less than two percent. I believe it's only a little over one percent. So for those that haven't changed property, that is a slight increase. Properties that have been sold during the year will help bump this up. That's a long way of saying that our property tax, we're estimating to be stable. So we're not seeing the pandemic hit and take that revenue source down, which is important because property tax is one of our top five. Also, we're finding that our sales tax, residential sales tax on houses actually peaking. Our sales price in the Monterey County is actually rising. And so that might actually push our property tax revenue in the upcoming years. But we'll have to see the blend of it all together. Good news is this property tax revenue is stable during the pandemic.
Awesome. Thank you. And then just one last question. One of the bullets in, in the slide, and I think it was also discussed in the staff report, was regarding the online travel companies. Where, where are we at in regards to that?
We are still working on that. Right now, what we focus on is implementing the two percent TOT and also enlisting new audit firm for our TOT. Because we need to ensure that our operators are educated and that we don't have revenue losses just from a lack of compliance from current operators. So that is the next project that we have. We'll be kicking that off and doing our outreach and getting them on board to pay taxes to.
Do we have an idea about how long that, that process would take?
I, I don't, I can't answer you.
I wish we would know that. We, we don't know that yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for the report.
You're welcome.
Any more questions before? All right, now do we have folks who'd like to share some thoughts from the public, please?
We have a few people who have joined the meeting, but none who have raised their hands so far. So at this time, no public comment.
All right. If we'll just go ahead then and bring it back to the council, council member Ed?
Yeah, just going through the attachment too. And it's, it's kind of interesting that on the revenue side, business licenses are tracking way up. So that'll be interesting to see if in forward years, that pays off to additional sales tax revenue, if there's new businesses that have opened or if these are just all of a sudden people realize that they needed to get one or we've been after renewals. But that's a substantial increase.
Business license is actually down a little bit.
So business license, so, oh, so I see. But budgeted would have been a hundred, but we're at ninety-one point eight. Okay, got it.
Yeah, so we're recommending a reduction in business license of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're monitoring that.
Okay, so just reading, I was reading that the, the other way. Okay, good. Thank you very much. And I guess the, the only other thing would be, it would be interesting to see. And this is not, nothing we can generate now, but at the end of the year, for us as a council to start looking at, how are we doing at the end of each year? And then we have decision points in terms of if there is excess revenue and the decisions to, you know, where does, where does that revenue go to? But we're looking at two, three, four, five years of recovery to actually get completely back. So it's premature to spend any time on that. But it's an interesting discussion point for future planning. For us to have a good handle in terms of at the end of the year, if we have surplus and we've managed it well, then there's some significant things we can do with a small surplus that's outside and after the year and those decisions in January and February from the previous year.
Right, so two fundamental concepts there would be ensuring that the budget is always structurally balanced, right? And then appropriations from savings are for one-time purposes or investing in infrastructure. And then two is at some point if council wishes is to establish policies on just general allocations of that. So it's, it's a, is a savings discipline, similar to the reserve.
Yeah, and I think that that's because we drew on the reserve. The fact that we had a reserve, although this is painful, was painful the previous times, not devastating. And so that's the maturity of a budget like ours is to continually seek to get back to that sixteen percent. I think it was sixteen percent we allocated, no.
Sixteen point six.
Sixteen point six?
Yes.
That correct? Yeah, and get back to that robust savings for rainy days.
Yep.
I don't want to cut off discussion.
That's all.
I'm ready to make a motion, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the changes to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
Second.
Second, discussion under the motion? Okay, and then we want to let the public know it's not because we don't want to talk about it, but this is something we talk about constantly and we continue to talk about it. So, and we need to all of us work together on this. So we'll go ahead, write the world call, please.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
And yes, so our extraordinary finance director got her wish. Please pass the resolution. All right, and, and going on to the city manager's update on COVID nineteen response efforts, obviously, part of the previous discussion that we just had. I know all of us are getting a lot of emails. I've just got some. Hey, we just got, sorry, your email list. But with the COVID nineteen and it's probably, people are just frustrated and, and we want to let you know what the city's doing. When we do get emails from folks, I do try to reply to them and let them know that we are working with the county and the state and we're sharing all the thoughts that our, our public is concerned about. And there are a lot of them and understandably so. So we'll go to our fabulous city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you can see my, my COVID slide here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to give you a slightly different COVID nineteen update today. Here is a slide about our city measures. We are out there again to enforce the COVID nineteen compliance rules. Our code compliance officer is enforcing the rules with respect to space heaters, the right table seat, distances between tables, looking at the tent structures, ensuring that the tents are secured, et cetera. We also experienced over the weekend now, again, larger inflow of tourists that are coming to town. And so we have reactivated our community services officers on Canary Row and WAF number one, that their job is to ensure that there is mask compliance, wearing the mask. We started again with the park, with the paid parking enforcement on the waterfront lot. As you know, when we went into the renewed stay-at-home order, we gave out an hour of free parking to, to everyone just to ensure that there is a chance for businesses to, to sell food to go. Prior to the last weekend, the President's Day weekend, we, we met with the WAF Association and discussed with them crowd control measures and, and reminded everyone what we want to do in case we, we get really large-scale crowd issues on the wall. And we could keep sending our emails out. And last week, we hit actually the number two hundred. And then we, we keep trying to keep all our residents informed about what is going on on the COVID front. I wanted to spend a little bit more time today about the vaccine issues. So it is a slow rollout, but you see a, a slow progress as progress as well. Every week, we, we are seeing increased opportunities for vaccinations. It started not too long ago and then we, we learned about Trump is giving out extra vaccinations. We learned about CVS vaccinations. We learned that Dr. Son Duty has vaccinations. Last week, the, the great news was that the Palo Alto VA Veterans Administration, the VA clinic brought vaccinations to our VA station here in Marina and was starting to vaccinate veterans there. It's still a confusing sign up. There are a, a lot of multiple web portals. So what I wrote is still confusing sign up through multiple web portals. Two one one is helping us or helping the county. They are taking registrations now over the phone and, and trying to coordinate that. Katie Castagna and her team have done an outstanding job together with the county to train the two one one staff to help there. The Board of Supervisor is, is on top of things and is asking for additional vaccines. That on the background also that we are confronted with an inflow of about thirty-five thousand or so additional seasonal farm workers, migrant workers coming into the county starting in March. The numbers that we hear are anywhere between seventy-five hundred to thirty-five thousand. The board asked for thirty-five thousand additional vaccines. And I think that that is hopefully being heard by Dr. Galley in Sacramento and, and hopefully the, the vaccines will come in stronger into the county of Monterey just because we have an additional inflow, inflow of farm workers. As a city, we, we are happy to support the county with personnel with respect to point of distribution events, which are vaccination events, anywhere between five hundred to fifteen hundred vaccines. The county envisions those vaccines with a short turnaround time notification for us anywhere between seventy-two hours to twenty-four hours. And we have committed all our assets that, that we can commit to that, to the county. They know that we are ready there to help them. They just have to push a button or give us a phone call and we will be there and, and taking care of a lot of those things. But I want to talk a, a little bit more about the vaccine issues. And here's an interesting tool that the US United States Census Bureau has created. And it gives you over two pages. I actually don't show you the second page, but it shows you over two pages COVID-related data that is important for us. You see on the lower left corner, how many folks are sixty-five and older? And you know that this is interesting for the tiers. It shows you also how many folks are living in the county, what's the average household size. It shows you also how many people are receiving food stamps. So how many households are below poverty level? So what I want you to, to remember from this slide right now is four hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred twelve, that's the, the total population of our county. And what I tried to do over the next slides, try to explain to you why Monterey County still does not receive the amount of vaccines that I think we should receive. That also the county has already remarked multiple times towards the governor's office that they said they feel underserved with the number of vaccines we are giving, we are getting. And I just wanted to show you two examples. And one of them, of course, is Monterey County. And here's another county that I just picked, that is Solano County, north of us. And I picked it because it's pretty similar in, in, in number of population. Four hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty versus Monterey County, four hundred thirty-three thousand. You see the age distribution is slightly different. We, we have in our county more in the seventy-five-year-old bracket. And you see again fourteen thousand, seven hundred houses below poverty level, thirteen thousand, four hundred ninety-three receiving food stamps. But here's, here's two more slides that, that, that are showing you the data side by side. And again, this is data from, from the US Census. And it shows you the population estimates from two thousand nineteen. And it shows you that Solano County has sixteen point three percent folks older than sixty-five and Monterey has around fourteen percent of those older than sixty-five. Now, we can dive deeper into the data, but I, I'm not doing that right now. If you compare race and Hispanic origins, as, as shown here on the US Census website. But what I wanted to do with you is just give you the big picture here. And here's, here's another tool that, that the US Census data offered is they give you a quick overview of industries and employment data from, from each county or city that you want to select. And again, I've selected here Monterey County and the number that stands out is agriculture, forestry, fishing and hunting. We have about forty thousand folks in that industry working. And then just scroll down to, to see a few more things, the retail trade, twelve thousand folks, finance and insurance, two thousand eighty-eight, et cetera, et cetera. So it gives you basically a breakdown, but I, I topped it off with respect to agriculture, forestry and fishing and hunting. And here's the same data for Solano County. And again, you see a steep, steep drop between agriculture, Monterey County and Solano County. Now, when you look at all of that, you would expect that somehow, somewhere the vaccine distribution is reflective of some of those factors that I showed you. The county is about the same size. The sixty-five-year-old older is slightly different, but not significantly different. And of course, we have in essence way more farm workers than Solano County has. So when you here look now at this website and you see the doses administered by county, you see, and that's data from, I believe, last night, that gets updated actually every couple of hours. It's, is a website by the California Department of Public Health. You see that in Solano, we have sixty-seven thousand doses administered and we have in Monterey County, forty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-two. So this is a significant difference of almost twenty thousand doses difference between two counties that by itself on the surface look pretty identical. But here's the secret. These are the so-called MCEs, the, the multi-county entities, multi-county entities. And the first one we have in common, that's the California Department of Corrections. And Solano has a prison, Monterey has a prison in the counties. These are multi-county entities and the prison population, of course, receives also vaccines. But what Solano County has and what Monterey County doesn't have, they have multi-county entities in the form of Kaiser Permanente and Sutter Health. So you have two large-scale healthcare providers who operate in a multitude of counties in the state of California and they are also receiving and gobbling up additional vaccines. So now the point that I tried to make with those slides here and the takeaway point is that this fact of the MCEs is known for four, five, six weeks now. And the Board of Supervisors has correctly reported that back to the, to our friends in Sacramento. But we have not seen yet an adjustment of those doses. Now, that is my last slide for that, that I wanted to, to share with you. What, what I, why I showed you that is basically I wanted to, to give you some background data because you hear a lot of folks that are saying we are not getting enough. Why, why are other counties further into the tiers than we are? It's a complex issue, but one of the issues really that the Board of Supervisors has identified and has asked the state to help with is that Monterey County has just, and I do use the word just in quotation marks, Montage Health, Salinas Valley Memorial Hospital, Natividad and Me Hospital. And you see there is really a widening gap between vaccines that we received through those channels. All the other channels, CVS, Walgreens, Doctors on Duty are available also for all the other counties as well in, in the same form that it's being made available to us. So with that, I conclude my COVID update. I, I felt it was maybe interesting for you to dive a little bit into the background data because it's all out there and you can all see and, and find it there. Generally, we are trending upwards. The state of California is trending. The state of California is trending every night higher in their doses administered and we are competing very well now on the nationwide level. We are not beating West Virginia yet or North Dakota. These are the states that are leading the charge right now. But it's getting better in California as well. And I hope that sooner or later, we get the solutions presented by the state with respect to the doses, additional doses that we need for the farm workers and also that we need to have some equity between counties. And with that, I'll, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, Hans, thanks very much for the statistics. And so the difference between Solano and our county is basically they have the large, the Kaisers, the networking hospitals and health networks. So they're able to access the vaccinations versus independent hospitals in Monterey County.
Yep.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean that our local hospitals are not doing a great job. I think Montage Health is doing an extraordinary job. But it's it's somewhere different than if you work through a multitude of a counties. And again, the 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 title MCEs, multi county entities is is the technical term for for that.
Good, very good. Questions for Hans before we go to the public? Okay, any one of the public wanted to share some thoughts with us on that?
Mayor Roberson, there are no members of the public with their hands raised for this COVID nineteen update.
Okay, very good. And and we would remind everyone to go to our website and there's a daily COVID update, over two hundred updates, full, full of information, similar to what our city manager has shared with us. County information as well as how to participate in surveys. And it's just absolutely excellent. I urge everybody to sign up for it, whether you live in the city of Monterey or not. It's such a great outreach. All right, we'll go to the council comments. All of us are on outside boards and commissions and this is a good time to update everyone and tell us what your activities are and what you're thinking. As you know, I'm just getting up to speed on the water management district. We're going to be having one of my favorite things, which is strategic plan, planning meetings coming up in March. But other than that, we're not meeting. But once a month, Dave Stolt gave, general manager gave a really good presentation to the League of Women Voters, just giving a great background. So other than that, that kind of updates you on on some of my activities. So anyone else want to share with us? Council comments?
I just wanted again, let folks know that the Monterey Peninsula's homeless shelter that has recently opened is a joint endeavor of the Gathering for Women and Community Human Services. And I represent us on CHS, Community Human Services. So they opened last month and have have a a group of clients of women and families. It's at about half capacity and that's because, as originally planned, the the facility, which has that different rooms. Originally, the thinking was that, you know, single women could share a room. But because of COVID, of course, they're not doing that right now. So the capacity will increase as people get vaccinated and we return to normal. But it has opened and everything is going well.
That's great news. Council member Dan?
Thank you, Mayor Roberson. I sit on two, well, I sit on a few boards, but the the two that I like to report on tonight is MST Board. That's Monterey Salinas Transit, just like Mayor Roberson on his board. We are planning and working on our strategic, our three year strategic plan. We just just had a a board retreat last month and I'll report on that a little later on as we start to put those, put that whole plan together. And the second is, it's interesting that the about the vaccine distributions because we we thought that our bus operators would would receive some vaccines because of the transportation fees. But unfortunately, we're not on that, on the list for vaccines. And so we wrote a letter to Monterey County asking if we could move up on on the on the vaccine list and we were refused, but that's okay. Well, eventually we will, we will get there, but it just seems important for our bus drivers who who run most of the transportation for, public transportation for our residents to to be vaccinated. The second board I sit on is the Water Masters and it's starting to heat up. It's a very interesting board and and the reason for it is our our purpose is to make sure that the seaside aquifer, the seaside basin is healthy and remains healthy. And the reason we reform is through a adjudication and a judgment that created our board to make sure we oversee the seaside seaside basin. And in the last couple of meetings, it's been very interesting because we are going to have a study that will show whether we have seawater intrusion into that major basin. And at the preliminary reports show that we are starting to to get that that seawater, which is not good for our basin at all. And then the second thing we're looking at is planning, getting a plan together on how we could improve the health of the basin. And remember that basin, whatever you put into the basin, you can take out. And right now, we're taking out more water than we're putting in. So which means that the health of that basin is not in really good shape. So as I mentioned earlier, that we have the the authority to make sure that whatever's put in is is taken out. But also we don't take out to ruin the basin, basically. And so, but but I'll get back on it. We have a couple more meetings coming up and it'll be very interesting to see that study. And that's it.
Yeah, that's really crucial. Thanks for being on top of that, Dan. Kind of relates to Monterey One Water and Tyler is on that. So what are we up to, about seven hundred acre feet now of Pure Water Monterey? Maybe you can update us on that, Tyler, in council comments, please.
Yeah, so the big thing that we have going on, and I've I've given a couple of updates on this, but just to kind of to to reengage on it, there are the two deep wells and the two shallow wells that were established as part of the base project for the Pure Water Monterey project. And and so that we had some issues with all of them. The two shallow wells had something like a sinkhole happen around them that caused us to have to reduce capacity. So we've since fixed them. They're they're functioning, but they're not producing as much. They're not pumping as much water into the ground as as we anticipated. And the deep wells, they're not as efficient as we had hoped. So we we cleaned them up a little bit and they're doing better than they were when we first started operating. But they're they're still not quite helping us reach the goal, particularly in regards to meeting a water purchase agreement with CalAM. So we've since decided to to add two additional deep wells. That's going to allow an increased capacity. And actually, we're going to have more capacity out of these wells than the base project can produce. So the the base project can actually produce more than what it stated in the water purchase agreement. So there's a lot of actual room for growth there, but it's it's actually a great opportunity. It actually helps reduce the cost of water for us creating these two additional wells. Because if we were producing, if we were producing enough drinkable water, then it would actually increase the cost. So anyways, all this to say, in this November, the first well, the third deep well is going to start pumping water in into the basin. And then the fourth well is going to be up and running by February of next year. So we're super excited to to get those online and being able to potentially find other source waters that that we might be able to use to help fulfill some of these other problems that that Dan was mentioning.
Before you leave that, Tyler, because when when we think of wells, normally a person might think of extracting water. But in this case, these wells are for pumping water into the basin.
That's correct, absolutely. Yep, yep. And so, yeah, so so we'll have an more than enough capacity to to meet our water purchase agreement with CalAM. So that is the the major thing going on. I I will just bring up one other thing. So as I'm sure most of you know, but just kind of to give a little bit of background for the general public, this past election was pretty contentious, particularly regarding Monterey One Water and and particularly the sea within Delray Oaks. And so because of some of the shifts, not just with Delray Oaks, but there's been a couple of new board members added to Monterey One Water, there's just been this kind of looming feeling about whether or not we were going to be reagendizing the certification, the the expansion of the SCIR, of the Pure Water Monterey Project. And so, so at the Recycled Water Committee meeting, which I I sit on last week, I requested staff to bring that back in front of the the board. So we're going to be looking at that again. And, you know, I think it's not just because of the politics associated with it, but I but I also think that there's not the same amount of pressure against the certification of it. Because if we recall, when we were trying to certify it the first time, it was right before CalAM was supposed to be getting its permitting from the state. Well, now that that's not something that's kind of looming in front of us right now, there doesn't seem to be as much resistance towards the certification. And again, the certification doesn't mean anything unless we have a water purchase agreement with somebody that wants to to for us to do the project. So it it's going to be a nice to have if we can get that locked away. And and an additional thing that we've been talking about for a while on our board is it would be great to just get that issue behind us so that we can start focusing on the issues that are really important to us, like our capital improvement projects. A lot of our infrastructure is deteriorating and these are like multimillion dollar pieces of equipment. And so anyways, there's a lot of a lot of work to do and I think it'd be great to get that out of the way.
All right, how about the chairman of Tamsi, council member Ed?
Just a few things to report. I'll start off with Ambag. Last week, we had our meeting, that's a once a month on a Wednesday night in a good group. So we each year, like all councils do, appoint subcommittees. And so on the Ambag Subcommittee, I'm on the Sanctuary Committee, which is not the Sanctuary Advisory Advisory, which meets once a month, but the Sanctuary Committee meets about quarterly. And that's just to continue to oversight some of the activities that happened with NOAA in the sanctuary. And the management plan is working its way through Colorado, through NOAA. No telling how long that'll take, but the management plan is done about every, what's supposed to be five years, but I think we're at seven or eight years right now. So the the federal legislative piece moves a whole lot different. But that's being reviewed and we'll come back. It's already had its public comments. So we hope to see that within this year. So we have some new elements that are exciting for coastal cities. Among them, beach nourishment and a variety of things will will really improve our workings with the ocean in a good way. Also, last Tamsi meeting, it's like three weeks ago, the city of Monterey received an award recognition for significant grant application. And Andrea and our engineering staff's fine work that's worked on obtaining a grant for the adaptive signal light system. So another means of recognition. And Andrea always does a great job when she explains it. And so she was there to receive the city Monterey's award. On the Old Monterey Business Association front, a good group, but openly, this is a group of folks that are in the business in downtown, restaurants, retail, bars. So a lot of concern, continuing to watch the numbers, very, very hopeful that the numbers will continue to get better so we can see our county get fully back and open and some of these businesses can open their doors and get employees back. So that's a good group, but there's a whole lot of folks that really are saddened by the fact that they've closed and they don't have their employees working. So everybody just wants to get back when it's safe. So we're we're looking forward to that and continuing news in the county. The only other thing I'll say for council comments is I I continue to hear across the country concern that once someone takes the COVID nineteen vaccine, that there's a high number of no shows on the second shot, that maybe somebody didn't like the the shoulder hurt or maybe they got some symptoms that they thought were not good for them and so they passed on the second shot. So I would just encourage those that are listening really strongly think about just get that second shot. Don't stop with the first shot. Consult with your doctor, get the best advice, but don't ignore it. If you have the vaccine, certainly take that second shot to get the highest percentage of protection and coverage. So just want to encourage everybody to learn as much as you need to know, but don't pass on the second shot because you, that's the point where you really need to accelerate the amount of protection you have. So strongly consider it. That's all I have.
Good. Well, many thanks to our city council who serve on boards and commissions that range from water to transportation, to aquifers and all all things good, blesses and so on. So we're very grateful for you doing that. City manager reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February twenty seventh at seven PM, our library will host their traditional mega event, which is the chocolate and wine event. It will be, of course, virtually hosted. The entrance fee will be seventy five dollars, I believe. And that buys you a registration and a wine gift back. And if you want to spend twenty five dollars more, you will also get some commemorative wine glasses that you can use during the virtual event. You'll also get a face mask and a lot more. This whole program will be hosted by the by the KSPW meteorologist Gina Vecchio. And I want to end by asking, so it will be a wonderful event again, February twenty seventh at seven PM, a big fundraiser for the library. And I would just encourage everyone to go there because that makes the budgeting for us a little easier on our side. And I want to end with, if I may, asking you what have Michael Jordan, the singer of The Weeknd and Inga Wait in common? It's the birthday today. So with that, happy birthday also to our library director.
Oh, well, I'll be. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
So she's going to play basketball and sing on her birthday then, right?
I think you're supposed to sing to me.
That's true. I I had a I had a meeting this weekend, mayor. We tried to sing happy birthday to be assumed to somebody. It just was horrible, so.
Well, well, we'll do it. We're sending you happy birthday. Now, somebody's going to invent how to have more than one person person speak on a cell phone at a Zoom meeting and that's going to be revolutionary. Good. With that, we're going to return to a closed session. Why don't we see everybody? Let's take about a ten minute break and we'll be back in a closed session. What about eight thirty six, eight thirty seven, somewhere about then?
Just to clarify, are we going to use the link we used earlier for the meeting, the closed session?
Yes, I hear, see a lot of not at his. Our session link. Okay, good.
Thanks.
Good night. Good night, folks who've joined us. Good night, good night, uh, folks who've joined us.